Good evening. It's 6:02 on Tuesday, September 3rd, and I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission. If you would, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Ms. Hunter, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice Chair Carter?
Present.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Chair Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepper?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Very good. Full house tonight. Item number three is closed session reports, of which we have none. Item number four is adoption of our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Friend, and a second by Ms. Lepper. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have adopted the agenda. Next item is the consent calendar. The only item we have tonight is approve the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of August 20th, 2024. This will be considered routine and acted by general consent unless any commissioner or member of the audience would like to pull the minutes for consideration. Do we have any concerns about the minutes?
I would like to pull the minutes.
All right, so we will pull the minutes. Request of Commissioner Carter. All right. And, so, discussion about the minutes?
Okay, yeah.
Item six. Item six.
Which is?
Items pulled from the consent calendar?
Oh, moving on to this.
Which are the minutes?
So, discussion about the minutes?
Yeah, I just had a small change on item number four. The motion was 4:0, not 3:0, on the adoption of the agenda. That's the only change I have, just a minor change.
Okay, 4:0 on a voice vote for...
Adoption of the agenda.
Adoption of the agenda. All right.
That's the only change I have, just minor.
Any other changes to the minutes from our previous meeting? All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Tuesday, August 20th, 24, meeting of the Planning Commission as amended?
Motion to adopt as amended.
I will second that.
Motion by Ms. Lepper and seconded by Mr. Carter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention due to absence.
Thank you very much, Mr. Friend, for bringing that to my attention. So, because you were not there. Commissioner Friend abstains. All right, so that passes on a 4:0 voice vote. Item seven is items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda, and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission on a non-agenda item? All right. Moving on to number eight. Written communications on non-agenda items. We did not receive any...
We have none.
Okay, thank you. We have no presentations or educational workshops tonight, and so we'll move on to item 10, which is the environmental assessments and public hearings. 10.1 is the site plan review. SPR 24-07, historic district review. Consideration of site plan review application within the residential historic zone to modify an existing single-family residence to remove existing sliding door, install vinyl horizontal sliding window, install wood siding, and find the project categorically exempt from SEQA. And I'll turn this over to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. So, Planning Commission approval is required for projects located within any of the cities for historic districts where the project includes modifications to the exterior architecture of the building as visible from the right-of-way. SPR 24-07 includes the removal of a contemporary sliding door on the west elevation of the existing single-family dwelling, address 2895 Bedford Avenue, and the installation of a vinyl window matching the style of existing windows along the same elevation, as well as the continuation of wood siding to match the existing siding. The single-story 1,110-square-foot building constructed in 1965 is located within the Bedford Avenue Clay Street Historic District, but is not included within a local, state, or federal register of historic structures. Overall, the project shall maintain the architectural style and character of the dwelling and will not remove distinctive features or materials. Based on staff's evaluation, the project would create consistency along the front elevation of the dwelling and unify features, maintaining the pedestrian orientation along Bedford Avenue. It is the opinion of staff that the project is consistent with zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9, site plan review, and 10-4-10, historic buildings in the city. Further, the project is consistent with the City of Placerville Development Guide and with the community design, housing, and natural, cultural, and scenic resources elements of the general plan. It should be noted that the application is seeking approval for completed work. And further, staff would just like to note that following distribution of the packets for tonight's meeting, we noticed an error in the staff report on page three under project description. This section includes information, bullets one through three on a separate project. The request description on page one of the staff report is correct, and it was noticed correctly. So, following the Planning Commission's determination, staff would revise bullets one through three to reflect the correct description. So, as such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the SPR 24-07 request, and conditionally approve SPR 24-07 based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hunter. Do any commissioners have questions for staff at this time? Seeing none at this time, we asked the applicant. Good evening, and thank you for coming down. If you would like to step to the podium, and if you would state your name for the record, and is there anything you'd like to add or emphasize about your project? Also, this is a time when commissioners may ask you some questions that they have about the project. Good evening.
Thanks. My name's Laura Lee Green.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Laura Lee Green, and I don't really have any other comments or questions.
Yeah, the application is complete, and I appreciate, you know, the photos and the description of the project. Also, I want to thank you for coming down here and taking time just to be present. Do any commissioners have questions for Ms. Green at this time?
I'd just like to echo the chair's sentiments about, thank you for coming down, and the application is complete. Thank you.
That's with their help.
Oh, it'd be great. Tip of the hat to staff. We appreciate that, too. Please have a seat.
Okay.
If there's nothing else you want to add at this time, thank you very much. And any other member of the audience care to comment on this project? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the commission for consideration and possible action. And I'll just open, you know, this seems to be a good project to maintain a dwelling within our historical district. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Carter, go ahead.
I would like to suggest a small addition to one of the findings. Finding number five, where it talks about our historical buildings. I'd like to add a sentence in there addressing the exception for the use of vinyl windows. I recommend that we put a sentence that says, "An exception for the use of vinyl windows in the historic district is justified because..." And then bring the paragraph from the top of page six, where it talks about, "does not include removal of distinctive features," proposed project includes removal, just that whole paragraph. I believe that is a valid argument for an exception, and it should be included in the findings to justify the exception for the vinyl windows in the historic district. So, I would just recommend that we possibly add that to our findings just to bolster that.
How does the rest of you feel about that?
I'm not opposed to it because I think it's good, but I just wonder if it's necessary to add additionally to the staff report, if it is included in the staff report. Not to say that I don't think it detracts from anything, I just want to make sure that it's necessary, I guess.
What I like about it is, because we're addressing a project that's in the historic district, I think it really bolsters and... And a reader of the minutes is going to see that, and it'll jump out, as opposed to a reader of the minutes may not necessarily have immediate access to the staff report. And so, this is a really good argument. I kind of, actually, just thinking about this and for other commissioners' consideration, moving forward with other projects in historic districts, this may not be a bad thing to consider doing, because it pops up in the minute, so I really kind of like it.
Yeah, like I said, I have no real issue with it, besides, I kind of was thinking the same thing, do we want to have that be something we do going forward, which I think is not a bad idea to give our exact reasoning in historic districts. So, no, I'm in support of it, and I think it's fine detail.
In addition to our standard findings for dwellings in the historic district?
Yeah.
Just to justify our exception to the ordinance, I think it's important to note that there is a valid argument and a valid reason why we're doing it.
And so, would you repeat your amendment one more time, so I can...
So, I was going to add a sentence to the end that says, "An exception for the use of vinyl windows in the historic district is justified because..." And then just bring that first paragraph from the, or the language from the top of page six, where it addresses that there's no removal of distinctive features, proposed project includes contemporary glass door. Anyway, so that wording, which I think is a valid justification, because it does match the existing windows and the wood siding to match, I think that's a valid justification for using the vinyl windows.
I think my problem with that is the words justification. I think I would rather bring that down a step and just say something a little simpler. The use of vinyl windows in this case is warranted...
Oh, okay.
...based on the staff analysis on page six of the staff report. And then we can quote that, as you said, at the top of, it's the paragraph at the top of page six. It's based on staff analysis.
Do we have a motion yet?
No.
Okay, all right.
I was just recommending a...
Yeah. I just think perhaps the maker of the motion could structure it, and then we can make a decision after that. I'm getting a little bit lost in terms of how we want to put it together.
Understood.
It might be easier just to make a motion.
So, are you... Does that get the point across that you wanted to make? So that we can...
I guess where I'm at, Madam Chair, is I like, I appreciate, and I like and support the suggestion of Commissioner Carter of using this language that's in the staff report. It's what staff wrote as a direct justification, and I would like to see it in the minutes. That's the only thing I care about.
You would like to see...
In the minutes. So, that becomes part of the motion, in the minutes, boom. Then it's right there. That way, again, going back to what I said a moment ago, anyone coming back to look at, look at how this got approved, wouldn't have to go trying to find the staff report. They could just go look right to the minutes, and the justification is right there in the motion. And I think that's what I like about it. So, however we get there is what I think I would support.
I guess I wanted to say that I share those concerns for just that reason, so you have some presidential value for those who look at what we've done in the past. The other thing that's different about this is that this house has been so modified from what it originally was, we have no idea what it was. And we do have an opportunity, if we wish, to be able to explore how this happens, how there gets to be construction that goes on in a historic district where there are standards that, you know, where the permitting process wasn't followed, things like that.
I'm prepared to make a...
Yeah, I think I'm kind of landing right in the middle of it, where I understand the verification, but I'm also a little hesitant to put a lot of extra wording in or be redundant. But I think in this case, it wouldn't be too much to do to include just this paragraph at the bottom of that. But I just would be mindful going forward of getting too detailed in that. But again, I'm not like, this is not a hill to die on, this is not something that I'm hyper-concerned about. So, would you like to make the motion, Ryan?
I guess.
Great.
I will do that. All right, I will make a motion that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, that we make the findings in support of SPR 2407 as findings one through six, to include the SEQA exemption under categories 15301 and 15331, with the addition to finding number five, that the use of vinyl windows in this project is justified... Because, and then add the wording from the top of page six of the staff report, "The project does not include the removal of distinctive features or materials." Proposed project includes the removal of contemporary sliding glass door from the front elevation of the dwelling and replacement with the horizontal sliding vinyl windows matching the two existing windows on the same elevation and the use of wood siding to match. That we conditionally approve SPR 2407 based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report dated September 3rd, 2024.
I have a motion.
A second.
We have a second by Commissioner Friend. My only concern, as I said, is justified. I thought that the word warranted is something that's more adaptable, but that's...
I'd be willing to adopt that as a friendly amendment if it makes the chair comfortable.
I think the wording comes across.
Okay.
And also may be more adaptable for future...
Okay, so changing the word justified to warranted is...
I appreciate that.
I'm going to accept that.
Okay.
I'll accept that.
Okay, thank you very much.
And in the furtherance of discussion, just to acknowledge Commissioner Lepers' comments about not wanting to, in general, make motions too wordy and specific. I concur. I think, again, when we're dealing with historic districts, to me, just given the history and what we struggle wrestle with, this is elevated, so that'd be my justification for doing it, yeah.
Good. Further comments?
No.
All right. Have a motion, a second. Ms. Hunter, would you please call the roll?
Vice Chair Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
That was an aye? Okay, sorry, my, kind of trolls my ear. So, that passes 5:0. Thank you very much. There is a 10-day appeal period, just so you're aware of that. Other than that, I want to thank you for, you know, giving us a very thorough application, and again, your patience in taking time to come down and talk to us, and also your efforts to maintain one of the houses in our historic district. You know, we all feel that this is good maintenance and keeps the structure habitable, as opposed to, you know, letting it deteriorate, and then we have another concern. So, thank you very much, and have a good evening. All right, so that concludes item 10.1. We will move on to 10.2. This is a site plan review, SPR 0402R, regarding the Placerville Food Co-op Master Sign Plan Amendment. Consideration of the Master Sign Plan Revision Application Within the Commercial Zone for the Placerville Food Co-op. At this time, I will just state that I am a member of the Food Co-op. However, my, you know, decision, my consideration of this particular item, I have no, you know, financial concerns with that. So, having said that, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. So, Planning Commission review and approval is required for applications seeking to amend an existing master sign plan. The proposed project includes an amendment to an existing sign plan for the Placerville Food Co-op located on Placerville Drive between the intersection of Perouse Road and Cold Springs Road, specifically including the addition of a dual-sided triangular projecting sign along the southern elevation of the detached carport. The subject parcel's master sign plan was originally approved in 2004, including a curved wall sign attached to the carport in addition to two wall signs located on the Market Building. The plan was amended in 2012 to remove the wall sign from the carport and place a 12-foot-long, 32-inch-tall ground sign in the planter between the covered parking structure and Placerville Drive. The proposed master sign plan for Planning Commission approval includes the existing wall sign on the Market Building, the existing ground sign, and the new, as-built, projecting wall sign on the covered parking structure. It should be noted that the applicant has indicated that they are willing to remove the ground sign in order to have the projecting wall sign on the parking structure. Commercial signs can have either a positive or negative influence on their surroundings, and it is important to carefully consider how the sign will influence the existing character of the surrounding area. It is the opinion of staff that the proposed amendment, including all three signs, does not comply with the natural, cultural, and scenic resources and community design elements of the general plan. While the applicant proposes signage of professional quality and finishes matching the existing building and signage, the close placement of the proposed projecting sign with the existing ground sign results in visual clutter along the parcel's frontage. As such, staff recommends the removal of the existing ground sign to reduce that clutter. Adequate signage for the existing business would be provided by the wall sign, the existing wall sign, and the proposed projecting wall sign. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following action: Adopt the staff report as part of the public record; Find the project categorically exempt from environmental review; Make the findings in support of the request; And conditionally approve SPR 04-02-R based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions for you. The first being, the square footage in the table on page four? So, with or... Let's just look at the final column on the right for the proposed signage, for 110 square feet. Is that still within the area allowed under the sign ordinance?
I believe it is. Off the top of my head, I would have to do a quick calculation.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to spring that on you, but based on the lineal frontage of the property. Since it wasn't flagged, I read this report with keeping that in mind, that they still would be within our ordinance, and therefore, you know, I then read the following paragraph discussing the visual clutter, the concern that two different styles there at the front of the property. So, that was my first concern. And then also, under the proposed finding number six on the last page of the staff report, applicant has complied with conditions of approval for the site as approved by the Planning Commission in 2004, 2005, and 2012. I just wanted to make sure I understood in Attachment 1, the conditions of approval, seven and eight, those have been brought forward from prior site plan reviews and then stated clearly under the conditions of approval. So, they have substantially complied with all the conditions of approval, except for seven and eight, the landscape maintenance agreement and the bicycle rack. So, those were required before. And so, tonight, we're just bringing those forward to conditions of approval for this revision.
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's not a... Conditions haven't changed, requirements haven't changed since 2012. Okay, those are my only questions. Any of the rest of you have a question for staff?
Actually, to that point, just so I understand clearly, that with the exception of seven and eight, which were conditions from 2004, they have complied, is that correct? So, would it not be more correct then that the staff report, item six, the applicant has complied with the conditions of approval, except as noted in Attachment 1, conditions seven and eight?
Exactly, that was going to be the motion.
Okay, so we can make that correction as part of a motion.
Right, so when we get to that part of our discussion, I was going to recommend that.
And Madam Chair, only because you mentioned it, that you are a member, could you explain, at least from my edification, if not for the greater audience, what being a member of the Co-op means or how that works? It does say community-owned, and I never thought about it, and I shop there to buy my garlic for planting because they're not treated.
Okay.
Anyway, sorry to put you on the spot.
For me personally, it just means supporting that type of retail effort in our community, and I see that Mr. Mingle is here, and I'm going to leave it to him to explain a little bit more, if you would.
Sure, oh, okay, great.
To address Commissioner Friend's concerns.
Question, it's just a question, not a concern, it's a question. I'm simply asking how that works.
Okay.
Not a concern. Make that clear.
I had the same question of you around the allocated square footage, so I think that would be interesting to know, because if it's within the allowable, that may have impact on our discussions or considerations. So, that was one of my questions, too.
To that point, I do think we need to know that, actually, before we approve it, because that's how we would treat any other, any other application, yeah.
And, you know, when I read this, I kind of thought that it was, but any way you can check on that this evening?
Point.
Sorry, what was the question?
Any way that you could confirm whether 110 square feet is within the allowable square footage?
It is.
It is.
But can I, can I just... But the ground sign is what staff is recommending they pull out, and I would totally support that. And so, they're going to be at 49 and 28, right? They'll be less than what they have now, is that not correct, if I mean? So...
That's what we decide.
So, I'm operating on the presumption that, as a planning commissioner, I did not approve total square footage in excess of what was allowable back then, so that if they're operating at eight, if any two square foot, which is what they have right now, is allowable, they're actually going to be below that with the addition of the new one and removal of the existing ground.
If, if, but we'll have to wait until we bring that discussion among the commission.
I'm pretty sure we didn't approve it were in excess.
All right. Any other comments or questions of staff? All right. At this time, we would like to ask the applicant to come up to the podium, if you would, and state your name for the record, if you don't mind. And if there's anything you'd like to emphasize about your application or clarify, we'd like to know about that.
Good evening. My name's Jacob Mingle. I'm the general manager of the Placerville Food Co-op, and there's not much to add. I'm here to just answer any questions you might have. Again, like we did state, we're more than willing to remove that ground sign if necessary to pass this motion. Yeah, so that's kind of where I'm at, but if you guys have any questions, it would be more work, so if we want to keep it there, but I agree, it does kind of add clutter visually, and it does seem distracting for cars passing by. We're fine with removing that sign to keep the wall sign up.
I think the proposed sign is really attractive, and I think the existing ground sign, I think, conflicts with it, and so...
And the proposed, the triangular sign, from what I read in your application, you had already had that in place and then took it away in place of the ground sign, is that...
Yeah, so there's, as a member of the Co-op, I'm sure you know, we've gone through a lot of general managers in our 13 years of establishment. I've been there for two years now, the longest-running general manager we've had, and I was unaware that the site plan had been changed. And so, our landlord, when I found the scaffolding for that sign in the back of the building, I thought it was scrap metal, and so I was like, hey, do you want to take this? Like, what is this? He was like, oh, that's for the sign on the carport. Being, having any type of visual... Having any type of visual knowledge of where we're at, since we're so recessed from the road because of our parking lot, has always been a struggle for us. Even the market sign is kind of low, you can't really see it until you get real close, but it's constantly been a struggle of ours of, I didn't know you guys were here, or I don't see a sign. And so, once I found that out, I was like, well, why aren't we using this? So I put it back up, per the landlord saying like, oh yeah, it's been approved and it used to be up. And so, we went for it, just thinking that it was fine and we wouldn't need to do a site plan approval, until it was put up and then is brought to our attention that in 2012, under a different board and different general manager, there was a change to the site plan to add that market sign. And so, we think the sign on the wall is more visually appealing, it works better with our colors of a building, it's matched with the colors that are already there, and we think it looks better and represents us better than the market sign itself.
Okay, thank you. And before we go much further, would you mind taking a moment to address Mr. Friend's question about what is the?
We have a vast viewing audience, so this is your opportunity.
Yeah, it's my chance to really sell it.
Sell the whole thing.
Yeah, so basically, it is community-owned, and we currently have 2,264 members within the community that have a share of the co-op. It's essentially a $300 one-time lifetime investment, capital investment into the business. So we aren't corporately owned by any, we are a corporation, but it's not, we're not answering to a larger corporation for what we need in the community, and in that sense, all community owners have a stake in the business. They can run for board of directors to be part of the steering committee of decisions being made. There's a lot of more community involvement in what they want to see, owners want to see in the store. There are some discounts along with being an owner, and when we are profitable, there are patronage dividends annually that get distributed between owners, so. Yeah, it's a pretty cool business model.
Any other questions for the applicant, Mr. Mingle? All right. Thank you very much. As you've heard, we really appreciate applicants coming down and talking about their project and answering our questions, so really appreciate it. So please have a seat, and we'll open it up to any other comments from the audience about the project. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of our hearing and bring it back to the commission for consideration.
Madam Chair, so if I understand correctly, staff has indicated that the 110 is still within the allowable, but do we have an actual number of what is allowable? I think just for the record, it would be good.
122 square feet.
Fantastic.
How much, 122?
Super.
All right. Well, looking at the project, as a member and a customer of the co-op, I've noticed the change in signage over the years. Honestly, the dark market sign, when that went up, I thought it was a good addition because even though I shop there, I know where it is, you see it, the color palette is subtle. It's, you know, kind of light, aqua and orange colors, but the, you know, Placerville Natural Foods market sign really jumps out, and I can see why previous managers thought, you know, and maybe rightly so, withdraw some more people and make it a little bit easier to find your site. You know, having said that, I also agree with staff's analysis, the two signs really don't go together well, and they do add some local visual clutter. Having said that, this is also, you know, a commercial zone, and there's a lot of variation in the type of signage that we've got. So I am interested to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say about the issue, the visual clutter, and what your preferences are. So who would like to go next? Mr. Friend, your microphone.
I actually have a thought on this. The first thing that bothers me immediately, when I look at the bottom-left photograph, paragraph three.
And you're on page?
Page three, paragraph, page three. What bothers me immediately is the market sign is not centered on the other side, okay? So regardless of what we did, I would want that moved. I think market, and I'm contemplating becoming a member now, so I'm going to speak as a possible member, and I might want to get on the board and make decisions, but so if I were on the steering committee or on the board, I would say, I would get rid of the term market, and I'd get co-op in there, because co-op, I think, seems to be the thing that you are. You're a co-op. I think, to me, that's far more powerful than market. Now, that's kind of outside of what we're dealing with. My suggestion would be, the motion I would support would be to support the staff recommendation of removing the market sign, because I do think it conflicts with the as-built projecting wall sign was proposed. I like that, it's attractive.
The triangular sign?
The triangular sign, it's got visual interest, and I like it. I acknowledge that the colors are subtle, and then I would recommend to the applicant to come back, and frankly, this could even be done as, I don't know, I'll have to ask staff, because I don't want to have them spend more money, but then to put co-op underneath that aligned with the point, as it were, okay, center, center it, but.
So leave open the possibility of a further modification?
Yeah, I'd leave open the possibility of a ground sign, but I would absolutely change that ground sign to co-op and have a color scheme that complements this triangular sign. But for what's before us now, I would support the staff recommendation of accepting the as-built projecting wall sign and removal of the ground sign. That's where I would be.
Okay, interesting. Mr. Carter, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I'm generally supportive, especially in commercial zones of businesses advertising themselves, and I do agree with Commissioner Friend, though, that it is, as it's currently configured, it does clash, but it is also within our guidelines to keep all, you know, all three existing signs. So I don't generally like placing hardships on businesses, and so I guess what I'm saying is that I'm willing to go either way. I'm willing to let them stay as-is because they are legal, but I do also agree with staff that as it's currently configured, it is cluttered, and so I could go either way. I could see a path forward either direction, so I'm interested to hear the other commissioners' points on that.
Okay.
I'm landing in the same place. What I think we're all feeling is that I don't want to force them to rip out the market sign if that's helpful to get them, have people notice it. I actually think market is more accessible just for a wider public, but in general, I'm falling where you guys are, I could go either way. I don't want to force them to rip it out. I think it would look better with it taken out with just the new sign. I think the new sign's lovely, it's really goes with the entire look and fits into the surrounding area, but I do think it's really weird-looking how it's off-centered. When I drove by, which I did drive by, which I drive by all the time, but I drove by and actually, you know, visually took a look at it, and I do think the offset is visually confusing and cluttered. So I think I'm falling in the same place where I don't want to restrict their signage, I want them to be able to have the market sign. I think if they even just moved it over right under that middle one, it would look a lot nicer. So I'm kind of like in the same place where I don't exactly know where to go with it because they are in the allowable sign. I don't want to limit them to just that one and then have them go shoot, we're not, people aren't seeing us, we're having more issues. So, all that to say, I'm kind of in the same boat. I'm not tied, and I also wanted to, I did have a question, I guess, for the applicant, is are you willing to take the market sign out just because you really, really want the new sign, or do you want the market sign and the new sign?
I think the market, yeah, I think the market sign does help. Anything to help get more visualization is great, but I do agree, it does look, the fact that it is off-centered, there are some decisions, I'm like, why didn't you put it right in the middle, you know?
Yeah.
And I agree, like, the food co-op could look cool, but I think the market does help, so it's more so to approve the sign that we installed, and if we have to take the market sign down to keep that one up, I'd rather keep that one up than the market sign. If we could do both, I mean, maybe we could even paint the market sign to match our colors and move it, you know? So I think there's things we can play with if we're underneath the allowable square footage.
Absolutely.
I'm more than, I mean, I think that's a great idea.
Would it be difficult to move that market sign? I didn't look at how it was.
I'm not sure how it's anchored in.
It's anchored in.
I could have the sign, our sign company, spot-on signs, come out and take a look at it and see what that would take. My question is, if we do do that and/or change the wording to say food co-op or something instead of market, would I then have to reapply, or is that something that we can, because if we keep the same square footage?
Okay. Ms. Hunter, please.
That would be at the discretion of the commission. We don't look at copy, we look at the square footage.
Exactly.
And the number of signs.
We could ask them to bring a proposed change and it be done administratively, right, so we wouldn't have to come back here. Yeah.
I think.
Would that include color, though? Because he suggested changing it, which I actually don't think is a bad idea, to make it kind of, even like a green, or, you know, like the blue.
Just change the black to that green.
Yeah, it's harsh compared to your sign, and I actually think it kind of makes you not see both of them. So I think if we could allow them to keep that, but somehow be clear that we would like it centered and maybe the tone match, but I don't want to force them to paint it either if they don't want to.
Correct. And color and whatever could be done managed administratively.
Yeah, my question, I think, is if you just let it stay the way it is, and then we do choose to change the color or the wording, would we have to reapply or, you know?
No.
Or change the site plan?
No, 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 that's what we're saying is.
Mr. Rivas?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just for clarification, we would not impose any changes to their copy, however they want their copy to be, that's the, that would be the, up to the business. But if they change the sign itself, color otherwise, then that would come before you. But one thing I want to point out, that the, we did require a master sign plan because although they're within the square footage, the maximum square footage, because they have a lot of frontage, they are over what's allowed in our sign code because they have more than one wall sign. That's what's triggering the master sign plan. So they do have an extra sign.
Okay.
In addition, you need to be aware of that. It's not, I didn't want you to think that it was solely that they were fully in compliance. We wouldn't have required a master sign plan otherwise.
Okay. So we said the number of signs as opposed to total square footage that's at issue.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that.
So I don't know if that's clear to the applicant. So basically, we need the market sign to go away because with the addition of this sign, you have too many signs.
Did you understand, working with staff?
If staff could, I mean, the purpose of a master sign plan is to deviate from the general regulations, so the number of signs is before you. You can decide to approve or not approve.
Okay.
So we can allow them to keep both signs, that's what we're approving now, and we could also require that the market sign be moved, right?
Yes, you can require that sign to be moved, but again, to make it clear, they are permitted one monument sign.
Correct, okay.
It's the extra wall sign that's really what triggered the master sign plan, because they put that sign up that didn't exist before.
Okay, all right, so pardon me, Madam Chair, just to be clear, they're allowed the market sign as a monument sign, they're allowed that, right? And so what we have to approve is the additional extra sign, the wall sign.
The extra sign, but again, you're approving it as a master sign plan that's exceeding our sign limitations.
All right, so I understand that.
Discretion.
Okay, thanks, Peter. My question then is, is it within our purview as part of that approval? Because I think the addition of the wall sign in relation to the monument sign, there's a consideration there. Can we then, as a condition of approval for the wall sign, say, but the monument, the existing monument sign needs to be moved?
Yes.
Needs to be aligned, so that's within our purview, and I'm kind of hearing that there's a consensus with the commission to do that, and I also am sensitive to compelling businesses to do things. I don't think that's going to be substantial, it'll be up to the applicant to decide if they want to keep the wall sign or not, or they're okay with moving the monument sign. So that'll be their decision, what they want to do. We can approve it, and then they can decide how they want to handle it, I think, if I understand this correctly.
Well, what's before you is what you see in the various illustrations.
Right, 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 so.
So you're recommending that you want a condition of approval that requires that that ground sign be moved over so it aligns.
Correct.
Better, yes, you can do that.
And then, to the second point, again, I just, let's say they keep the monument sign, they move the monument sign, they keep it. If they decide to change the copy in there, that doesn't have to come back to us, does it?
Does not.
Or the colors?
Even the colors?
The colors, no. They decide their copy.
Okay.
We don't.
Great, so, oh, good, so they have at least that discretion.
Everything around the copy, we do.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your clarifications. Okay. Mr. Smith?
I just have some questions for the applicant, because what I wanted to know is, who designed this new addition?
A local artist named Nate Rafke.
Okay. The reason I do that and ask is because by conventional standards, I agree with everyone. It's busy, it doesn't grab your attention, but at the same time, when you're driving by at 35 or 25, 40 miles an hour probably.
35 is the speed limit, Mr. Smith.
Right, but when you're driving by, you're not going to read the small lettering, grocery, deli, produce, wellness, and then the different kind of lettering, but what it does do is aesthetically, it matches the same design you've got on the building itself. So is that a logo that you've used on other materials?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that that kind of advertising is where you don't recognize the words, but you recognize the whole logo, and you get a feeling for the place, which is more reminiscent to the signs I would have seen in 1960s or something, you know, open to all, et cetera. So I guess I'm just offering a different perspective to what they did in that there might be some method to the madness. What we described are conventional standards, and I do agree with the view that it does clash with the market sign because it's just so different, but I'll leave that up to you folks.
Yeah, I think also, we had our recent application just up the road for Smog Ace, Ace Smog, Nerdy Dave's, and I don't know if you guys have seen, but the signs have gone up, the color's been up and everything, and the consideration I have here is very similar to them. I want them to be seen, I don't want people to be confused or stopping traffic to pull in, so I am generally inclined to go ahead and make the motion that we move the sign, center it so that it's visually appealing and I think not distracting between people. I do like the co-op sign, and I'm okay with it being there because I think just having that one up in the back is too far back to see. I think it's a lovely sign, so I don't think it's, you know, aggressive or offensive on the road. So I don't know if you wrote down language, Michael, to make the motion for moving the sign, did you?
I wrote it.
You have it? Okay, good, yeah, because that would be my, I think that's where I land, is let's move the sign under it, let them keep that sign. Should they decide they want to take that out, that's fine, but I'm not inclined to make them take it out, and then they can change the color or the wording if they so choose, but that would be my, where I land.
Okay, great. Staff would just add that, you know, if you're going to require that, you can make it at the staff level so that if they do move the sign, then they would submit a new site plan showing the location to be recorded.
Site plan submitted to for staff approval.
For staff approval.
Okay, I hope we've got, no, let's see if we've got it all. What I've written down is that we would add possibly under the conditions of approval. What I've written down is that we would add possibly under the conditions of approval, maybe one, sub point three, the existing monument sign to be centered under the triangle's wall sign or removed. A new site plan will be submitted for staff approval.
Apologize. Can you please repeat that and where you're suggesting that go? I apologize.
Let's see, let me hammer out the, we don't have a motion yet, so I'm just trying to put it, make sure we've captured everything. Did that, did that get, get the point?
I think that did.
Okay, so existing monument sign to be centered under the triangle wall sign or removed. A new site plan will be submitted for staff approval. Okay.
If, if it's moved, if it's, if it's.
If they decide to remove the monument sign, do they have to submit anything to you? Or do they only have to submit something to you if they move it?
When they move it. If it's only if they move it.
Only if they move it.
Oh, and we are compelling them, we're not giving them an option.
Well, they can, we're giving them the option to remove it entirely.
Right, or.
Or to move it.
Move it.
And if they move it, that's when they have to provide a site plan. They don't have to provide a site plan to you if they remove it, do they?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So if it's, only if it's moved?
It'll be up to, applicant has the discretion to remove it or move it. If they move it, then they will submit a site plan to staff.
I thought that if it was taken away completely, then if the sign is moved, a new site plan. Okay, very good. So I'll make the motion.
And then don't forget to update number six.
Right.
Okay, good.
Thank you for that. Since I have the, the notes written down. I move that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record and find that this site plan review request is exempt from environmental remove. Why did I say I'd make the motion? Exempt from environmental review under SEQA. Make the following findings in support of SPR 04 dash, dash two, dash R. There are findings one through five. And under finding number six, add the phrase, let's see, after approved by the Planning Commission 2004, five, and 12, except as noted in conditions of approval for SPR 0402 dash R 2024. And amend our recommended conditions of approval for this site plan review to add point three, under number one, point three. The existing monument sign to be centered under the triangle sign or removed. If the sign is moved, a new site plan will be submitted for staff approval. That is my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to make one additional comment, and I hadn't noticed this before, but I, I like this even more because it, this, this wall sign ties in with the big one on the building. I, I mean, just, and it just flows. And, and so having a centered, I, I think it's just going to really help that. So I, I like this a lot. I hope it works for the applicant.
You know, I appreciate staff's analysis that, you know, that it's a little, a little chaotic. But, you know, as we've discussed before, it's important as people approach the driveway to know, or if they're new in town, they, they see market and they're, they're looking for that. So it helps draw them in and hopefully will help, you know, the, the business succeed. And so, you know, I think this is a, a good compromise. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Please call and roll. Ms. Hunter?
Vice Chair Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Friend.
Aye.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations, after all of this, you know, hash making up here, you have passed this 5-0. And as you have probably heard, there is a 10-day appeal on this approval. However, you know, we all agree this is a very straightforward and good project. And thank you so much. Again, appreciate you taking your time to answer our questions and kind of clear things up for us. And best of luck and keep up the good work at the co-op. I appreciate it. All right. Moving on. Number 11, continued items. We have none. Twelve new business, none. And we'll move on to 13 matters from commissioners and staff. And we'll start with 13.1, staff reports.
I can start. We will have a meeting on the 17th.
Mm-hmm. I saw that there are, are two items for consideration.
There are two items for consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else?
The 17th.
All right. That's all. Then we'll move on to 13.2. That's Planning Commission Matters. And under that, we have our special committee report. And this is, well, it's a little confusing, honestly.
Madam Chair?
And so I turn it over to Mr. Carter. You want to start?
I did have actually one question for staff under 13.2, if that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the first item, I just, I had a question. Yeah, oh, no, 13.2 or, I guess, or, or one, it doesn't really matter. I just had a question for staff before we get to our.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I just had a question for Pierre about the temporary construction fencing that's blocking the parking lot of the Round Table Pizza Parking Lot from there to the Wealth Management. Just the status of how that came about and the timelines on when that might be removed.
Sure, we're probably all aware that Round Table has closed. And so, and I'm receiving this secondhand, but secondhand from other city staff, not, not from the property owner. But the property owner had indicated that there was an attempted break-in to the back of the store. I'm not really sure if they got in or not, but they were trying to get in, is my understanding. He also was concerned about the amount of parking going on in the parking lot. So this is temporary fencing to be put up as he attempts to lease the property.
Okay, yeah. It's, it was startling to see that, so I hope they get somebody in there soon.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other topics not related to the special committee report? Okay, let's move on to that.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Friend.
Well, I just had a question about, and I would have asked this had I been at the last meeting, the mural for the Apple Farm Place, it was part of the original application. I don't think the mural's gone up yet, although there is a really nice mural on the Save Mart market. I just happened to notice, so, which is great. But I was wondering if there's any update on the mural for the Apple Farm Place? We have no update. I just understand that it is the intent of the property owner to put those up. Okay. You know, is it, is it out of, out of line for us to make a formal request to get an, an idea on what, when and what might be happening? Just because it was a great idea and we're interested? We can certainly ask. We're still, we're working very diligently on the current application as far as the parking landscape and everything else. Sure, sure. But if, if we remember to ask him about that. Okay. I talk to him pretty frequently. Yeah. And then we can. And he's got a big project. I saw, you know, the, the Elrata Crossing, that's, that's his project too, I think, right? Big, big project there, so. Yeah, okay, good. Thanks. Yeah, you're welcome.
Nothing else before we move on to the special committee? All right. So we have in our packet, actually several documents, and those were from Mr. Carter and Mr. Smith, the Special Committee for Historic Review. And then when we arrived tonight, there was a new memorandum, actually several, new memorandum, also dated September 3rd, from Mr. Carter and Smith. And also, as long as I'm kind of listing things, I want to cover all of them. Another memorandum dated October 1st.
Oh, yeah, sorry. That was just.
Okay, so that, and that is from Commissioner, so.
I threw that in there.
Okay. That is from Commissioner Lepper. All right, so we'll get to both of those. And, and before we finish this item, I, I also want to, I will be saying something about the public comment we got from Ms. Ruth Michelson. But first, I want to make sure I'm clear, that we're all clear about this different memorandum. So, Mr. Carter, would you like to take the?
Yes, I will start us off.
Okay.
Yes. So the first item here, this introduction to the revised memos, I attempted to kind of give you an idea of what these two documents were. So Attachment 1, on Thursday, when I received my packet, I realized that I had sent the wrong draft to staff. So I'm going to ask the, my fellow commissioners to disregard item 13.2.1, Attachment 1. I did submit the proper draft to staff on Thursday, but it was too late for inclusion in tonight's agenda. So this memorandum labeled Attachment 1 is an incorrect draft. I apologize. I take full responsibility on that. The, the deadline was stressing me out. So disregard that one and consider the memo that was given you tonight as a replacement for Attachment 1. Hopefully that brings a little bit of clarity to that particular extra document that was received tonight. Also want to thank Commissioner Lepper for her efforts. I have not had a chance to read this yet, but I look forward to that. I actually included, in Attachment 2, that second document is the more, the less aspirational and more actionable document that I had, that you guys had requested, that we had talked about at our last meeting. That is Attachment 2. That is the correct one. That's good. I look forward to discussion on that. And then I also attached the two resolutions that were originally attached to this item back when we brought it forward almost a year ago. So hopefully that explains all the extra documents that we received, just to give some clarity.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
No, I, I'll just give my input about how mine came about, which is that I couldn't meet that 826 deadline to get it into the packet either. But I did still want to take the time to sit with it. So I actually sat down and started drafting this. Well, I looked at the Planning Commission one and said, why am I editing the Planning Commission one to us when that's your work? So I didn't touch that one. What I decided to do was try and start drafting one to City Council from us, just to create some sort of draft, which then I got my packet on Thursday and saw your drafts. And I was like, okay, cool. These are kind of actually vibing together, what I had come up with and what you had come up with. So I just went ahead and fleshed out mine. It really aligns with yours, I think, in terms of what the substance is. It's just really the, the formatting and, and how, I just did it, I don't know, just one bullet points that I thought of. But anyway, that's how this came to be, is that I started to edit the old version, realized, why don't I just try and make a new version for City Council?
And your old version is this one?
Is that, yes.
Dated 8/11/24.
Yes, so rather than kind of rehash our discussions, I went ahead and started a draft towards City Council, which then again, like I said, I got Ryan's, which I left at home, Ryan and Kirk's copies, which really aligned with this, with the two copies for City Council. So this is intended to be my draft language or submission, or whatever you want to call it, help for a, a letter to City Council. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, I, I just, I just heard mention of an 8/11/24 document. Do I have that document?
It was part of the packet for.
Okay, so that'll be, that'll be in my packet.
Yes, your draft and my draft.
Which I do have. Okay, all right. I just want to make sure I have all the documents. And so there's a lot, there's a lot of great stuff in all of these, just, just to say that. And I have a few additional comments, you know.
Let me start off by saying I appreciate the work that all of you have done on this. And regarding the actual memo to the City Council, I was working with these prior drafts that have been in our packets. And I am crafting a letter to go to City Council. We have discussed this before, and that really is, as Chair, that is my responsibility. So it is my plan. I, when I received the packet and the information, I started working on that memo to City Council on behalf of the Planning Commission. And I think, you know, it, some of what you've presented tonight will be included in that. Like I said, I was basing it on our prior documents. But it was my intent to have that in our next packet for your consideration as the memo. And I, I'm sorry if you misunderstood, because you both have crafted a memo to the City Council. And as I said before, that really is the responsibility of the Chair, and I always fully intended to do that. But there's great information in all of this. And what I'd like to do next is to make sure that we are clear on what our top priorities are so that that is conveyed in the cover letter to our City Council. And both, actually, all of your work will be included as attachments, except for the wrong draft that was submitted. But all the current work that you've created will be included as attachments for their review so they can see how long we've been working on this, you know, and how we've come to get this list of priorities. So just wanted to make sure that you were clear about that. Based on my reading of, even though it was the wrong draft, I think, you know, the information is essentially correct. I didn't see any thing that was in conflict with what we had discussed. But I want to make sure that we, as a group, feel that it is important to emphasize to City Council that there, that the issues that were brought up by Ms. Lepper in her 8/11 memo, things like enhance the historic district inventory list, installing signs, and then Q and A sessions and those kinds of things. I want to make sure that those are important priorities for the commission, that these are things that we all want to continue to join in and do work on. Is that generally true?
So my, my, first, a couple of comments then. I, I think, first of all, whatever we send to council should very, be very brief, concise, and to the point. And should not have a lot of attachments and be verbose.
I disagree. I think all the attachments are necessary.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, point of privilege, point of privilege. I, I think, I've been recognized, I have the floor. And I think then we can, we can all discuss it. But I do think, I think we don't want to overburden, in my view, we don't want to overburden the council with a whole lot of attachments. I think what, what's absolutely relevant, and I totally agree, is the items that have been identified through the various memorandums. And I'm going all the way back to the notes submitted to us by Commissioner Lepper when she could not attend the discussion on this because of a babysitting issue, if I remember correctly. Those were really good, which included at a minimum putting signs in front of the historic district, those kinds of things. I think it's important to identify these pri, these items, and I would actually even prioritize them. You know, we can do this, this, and this, right? One, one seems to follow the other. And I have those noted in my notes, but there's a lot of stuff here to kind of put back together again. And I think also what's really important, I think it's fundamental frankly, is the discussion, the acknowledgement of what council did by resolution, creating the advisory committee. And then very, very specifically, the advisory committee was not dissolved, it was suspended. And so I think while the term dissolved was used in some of the memorandums, I think it's essential to go back to the ordinance which said suspended. I think because that means it could be recon, easily reconstituted as opposed to recreated. So I, I think we should, at a minimum, we should just be accurate with that point. I think it's really important that his, the historical record on this is, the advisory committee was suspended. Those duties were assigned to commission. And then, as was brought to the commission's attention, which really is the reason why we're doing this, is for multiple years, the commission did not do anything with those responsibilities. To me, that, that's, that's the most critical driving factor. That's why this makes all of this effort legitimate. And then we, we recognized it, and through the efforts of Commissioner Carter and Commissioner Smith, we've been able to synthesize some things. And so here is a list of priorities, we, we think. And we can't get them all done in one year. We said this is going to be over time, but we'll work on this. To me. To me, I think that is the sort of memorandum that we should send to Council. And so, it doesn't have to be super verbose. I think it would be very brief, like I said, brief, concise, and to the point. So, my thoughts.
Mr. Smith?
Well, my perspective is that I was surprised at the last meeting, as I said, because I didn't expect it to be brought because we weren't a full complement of five. And I couldn't imagine we would go forward when Michael Friend, who had initiated the committee, was not present. So, we'd assumed that we'd be doing it at that time. What I understood Commissioner Carter was doing, and what he drafted, was a synthesis of what he understood from a majority of those who were present. And we agree that our initial work product could be simplified and made more succinct. The essential element of it and its purpose, however, we're strongly committed to the idea that it should remain the same. One, there needs to be public workshops. I don't think we're in a position to have evidence to base any recommendation on, because we haven't had any. We had a chance tonight to find out, "Why do you people keep putting up signs and making modifications to buildings when you've got Commissioner, contractors, who should be telling you what the law is, et cetera?" So, we haven't really heard from the public on these things. Logically, the first workshop to start with is the standards, because when those were first offered by the Historic Advisory Committee, and then by the Planning Commission, it was described as being not complete, it was just a start, and they expected it to be modified. It never was. So, that's important. And the reason it is, is because those who talk about wanting a revival of the Historic Advisory Committee are basing it on the idea that it would do things that the Commission hasn't been doing. But if we did them, then it wouldn't be necessary. And what it does do for those who are involved in historic projects is it makes it much more complicated. And I gave the example before of the Herrick Building, where they came before first the Historic Advisory Committee, and then they come to the Planning Commission, then they come to the City Council, and they had approved a plan which included what they knew was underneath. But how did they know? From the 1800s, they didn't have floor plans in the City Hall. So, they find out that the footings are different, but they're not going to come back to the process again, because they'd have to go one, two, three, four. It's too costly, and it shouldn't be necessary. So, one of the things those folks said, from their experience, is that could have been done administratively, but they just put extra expense to make that foundation more secure. So, that is really the heart of it. The other thing is, when it comes to the discussion of, "Should Main Street be added as an historic district?", there are people, as I've explained in the past, we've been told by property owners who don't want it, and they don't want it based on misunderstandings about what it would do. If you've got a tin roof, they haven't manufactured and mined tins since 1900. Are we going to require them to do that? That's not clear. And it would be more clear if we had our historic standards, you know, set first. That's the first thing. And then, for those around, including maybe in this body, who are apprehensive about how this will work, do it one at a time. You start with that one and see how it works. And you give people a chance, just like we had when we had that joint meeting that the staff put together with the City Council and the Planning Commission, where we hear from the public, and we get an airing of it. The only difference is, we want to make sure there be publicity, because we want to hear from everybody, so that we then be informed people and make recommendations. That's the suggestion. What I would have asked this person in the historic district tonight is, "Did you know that there was a way to find out the history of your building? Did you know what the standards were, et cetera?" We need to hear those kind of things before we can make recommendations. I'm not going to be in control of what you write. I trust that you're going to make the representations on whatever you have. But I feel very strongly that, we've worked on this for a year. And so, we left out the Mills Act, because frankly, we put it in because we heard it mentioned by you a couple of times, Madam Chair, the Mills Act. And I frankly didn't understand it very closely, because I didn't think I had to, because it was something that you... We don't mind taking it out, because those other things that remain in are things that were on the resolution 10 years ago.
Right.
So, that's what we would want. And if we had our chance, we would have just done the Amy Lepa treatment of making sure that it was well-typed, free of errors, and succinct, which I'm not usually known for doing.
Well, that's what I really went for. I don't exactly know where this conversation is going, except to say that I think what I really worked to do is to take all of our, I had every memo laid out. I really tried to take all of our discussions, all of our contemplations from April till now, and capture them in here with giving some background to the City Council, so that they can see the flow of things, but not including a level of detail that I think can sort of numb people to things. When I reviewed the Historic Advisory Committee charges, I only saw really three that we aren't doing, and the three of them are in our suggestions. So, I think we're hitting, I do think, because I was also, as I was writing this, you want it to be effective, right? So, I don't want them to get a memo and go, "Thanks." You know, "Well, what are you going to do? Or what do you expect? What are you asking? What's the point of this? Like, what, you know, what's the next step?" And so, that's what I really aimed for in this. And I think, like, I know you guys haven't had time to review it, but I think I worked really hard to try and capture exactly what we're trying to go for, and I hope that that's helpful, but also does capture, like what you said, all of the different conversations that we had, but really hones in on the why, the what, and the who, which I think is important to actually having this be actionable, because I do think that we have come up with some things in writing this. I said, "Yeah, this is good. These are good points. They are achievable." I did include at the end, "These aren't meant to be an undue burden, but why they would be helpful for the Planning Commission to do, not for any other reason, but for our job, both as the Planning Commission and as the, you know, whatever, Historical Advisory people for now." So, anyway, that's all, just to say that I think that we're ready at this point, that we can, that your work has come to fruition, and that we can come up with something, and I think hopefully find that is captured.
Well, I think, you know, my summary memo, it will include all of these attachments, because this is important. There's a lot of detail that the City Council may want to take a look at and consider. What's missing from right now, and this is what I'm doing, is, and Amy, you just hit on it there at the end, tying the ordinance, that, you know, there are eight or so duties. And some of them are very specific to this information. And so, tie these priorities under our responsibilities, and make sure it's clear to the City Council that we aren't overreaching, we're doing, you know, what it is our responsibility as, serving as their Historic District Committee, so that they understand that we're working within those parameters. But then, it's important for us to advise them. And we've discussed this a lot. The ordinance, as written, is difficult to apply. And, you know, we've, I've seen this on, I think, all the documents so far, that that is, that's our top priority. It's expensive and long-term. And so, that's, the memo is going to say that.
I'm sorry. Well, our top priority would be what? I'm sorry. I missed that.
To revisit the ordinance, and perhaps consider...
Ah, okay.
Writing a new...
I just want to make sure, I want to make sure I heard it.
That is, and so, the summary memo is going to take this information and highlight long-term goals, aspirational things, as we discussed. And then, under the same auspices of our, you know, directives, more short-term, achievable, perhaps a little more affordable, things like, you know, signage, and updating, and taking a look at our historic district inventory list. These are things that we, as the Planning Commission, are to do. Having said that, that even requires some staff time, and, you know, a nominal amount of money, certainly not the investment that would be required to draft a new ordinance. But bring it to the City Council's attention. You know, we've worked with this for a number of years. These are the problems that we have encountered, and they know about. They've had plenty of appeals. They know what the struggle is. And so, how we can move, both in the short-term and the long-term, move forward to, you know, something that suits our community, much better than what we have today. You know, having said that, you know, drafting or revisiting, revising the ordinance itself, again, very long-term. And before we get to that, and we still have to work with what's on the books. And I think that there are some things, signage, something you just mentioned tonight, Mr. Smith, you know, do these people, do we need to put signs up? How do they know if they are in a historic district? So, again, that's something we've mentioned, and it's in, I think, both of these summary memos. And that's a short-term, achievable, affordable goal that's going to make things, and that will exist regardless of what kind of ordinance we have, whether we keep it just as the way it's written, or in a certain amount of time, years, maybe, we have a brand-new ordinance. You know, we are still going to have our historic districts, and so, then if we are able to put up some signage, notify homeowners, those kinds of things that we've talked about before, we can move forward with that, and that will still operate under whatever ordinance we have on the books in the future.
I guess I had some questions about the idea of whether, for example, saving money and whether this was doable. And I'll give you an illustration, because sometimes the product we came up with and the way we came up with it kind of reminded me of that old description of an elephant being a horse designed by a committee. Take, for example, the issue of what the City Planning Director told us last year, is that the staff was working on updating the inventory, and told us that the cost is about $30,000 minimum. Those are done by, with the concert of outside groups, every one of them. So, you have Commissioner Carter and I spending a year looking at thick stacks of these, looking at how other people did it, and then we've got a proposal, we're going to go around and take snapshots and so on. I've never heard of anyone who's done that in the state or in the country. I don't know how it would work. So, if you, frankly, we don't have the money right now to do much of anything of a competent design. However, there's a number of history groups locally, and just as a side note, on September 17th, down at the old post office, there's a large meeting of a whole bunch of people, a public meeting where you'll see about a dozen different historic groups. And those that I know don't want to work with the city, because it's just not perceived as workable. So, we would build up confidence if we started to hear from them about things like the standards. And if we don't have that public input, it's not going to give much credit to the final product. So, when it comes to talking about costs, I don't know how we could say we're making the cost easier when we're talking about a task that requires, just by the staff's account, $30,000-plus dollars. We don't have the money. And there are private groups that are seeking to do it now, so.
I have a point, a thought, or my point on that, it's not our responsibility to worry about the cost. Our responsibility is to set forth what we believe are the priorities for Council to make decisions on, and they can decide what's important, what's affordable, and what's not.
I agree.
That's really our obligation. Our obligation is to do the assessment based upon the charge that was given to us when the Historic Advisory was suspended and those responsibilities were given to us. Okay? And then, the Council ultimately will have to make the decisions on what can be, what's affordable, what's not. I think how we serve the Council is by setting forth fairly logical priorities, and I concur with you, Madam Chair, in terms of short-term and long-term. I do think an ordinance is a very, very long-term. I think getting signs up and trying to get a handle on our inventory is a very short-term. I think it's essential that we have the workshops to ultimately get to the ordinance. Okay? So, I mean, I can see a very logical sequence, a roadmap, if you will, about things to be done. I regret that I do not have Commissioner Lepa's memo from last meeting. I didn't refer to it. But, you know, I certainly will want to go through this and offer some recommendations. And I think, you know, we're all fairly much on the same page of a similar mind. And then, a memo that will come from Commission, I think, is kind of the process to Council, will be, again, can be very clear, and with a supporting documentation. But I think in the cover memo, it should be really clear to the Council, "Here's why, and here's what, and here's how."
Exactly.
And I think that's kind of what you were saying, Commissioner.
And that's, yeah, that's definitely the direction I'm taking in. As I said, there's, I appreciate the revised memo. Thankfully, what I was working on is still in line with, in agreement with your original draft. And also, I was already tying in some of the points that you made in your August 11th memo, and I think all of, you've woven all of that into...
Yeah.
This September 1st memo.
Yes.
It's okay.
Shows you where I'm at.
So, anyway, I will, as I said, I'm about halfway through it. I have new information to work with, and I hope to have that in our packet. And Ms. Hunter, when do you need new material by for our September 17th meeting? So, for it to be included in the public, the packet that's distributed, so the public can read it and come comment if they would like?
We're anticipating that packets will go out a little later next week, so by the end of Tuesday or Wednesday. And you can always, if you need a little more time, our drop deadline is Thursday.
Tuesday, the 10th. Okay. That's kind of what I had in mind. So, right, I will do my level best to get my draft included in the packet, so that you all have a chance, and the public has a chance to read it, and if they choose to, come and share their thoughts with us.
So, are we, so are we expecting that this is going to be on our next agenda, the 17th?
Well, the special committee is always on our agenda, and I hope to have this for your consideration.
Okay. And I'm just kind of wondering what that process is going to look like, because right now, I'm thinking we're probably going to have to be doing a lot of wordsmithing at the meeting, just, so I'm just kind of setting the expectation upfront.
Right. That's why I'm going to strive to have it included in the packet for the 10th. That gives you a chance to take a look at it and start collecting or putting down your comments, and hopefully just go through maybe one more draft to include that.
What do we have on the agenda for the 17th?
There are two items. They're both, actually, one of them is a general plan amendment, zoning amendment?
Yes, we have a general plan amendment and rezone for a single-family lot.
Right.
And...
Nothing overwhelming, though?
We also, we do have other items on the agenda that were not noticed. They don't require...
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So, we do have, we do have a relatively robust agenda.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if we want to move it to the first of October.
I will be, I will do my best to submit that, and if we time run short, it's still out there for your consideration.
Okay. Well, that's good.
And then, we will continue it as needed. This is an ongoing item until we can, you know, come to some agreement and pass it on to City Council.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to add, in response to Commissioner Friend, that I agree that it isn't our job to talk about the money issues. We need to address them. My comment was because we had something added to the proposal about a way to do it, where it's taking photographs and things like that, which is not, we had no hearing record to support that, and it's not consistent with what Commissioner Carter and I found. We avoided making conclusions ourselves, because we feel we need more information. No matter how much we studied, we all need more information. That's why, to us, the workshops is important. Thank you.
I think the two of you did great work. I'm really impressed.
All right. I want to address the letter we received from Ruth Michelson. It's titled 13.2.1 Comments. I want to thank her for submitting this, for our, you know, education. And I'll leave it, you know, I'll just leave it to the Commissioners who, this was presented to us this evening. to us this evening, so I doubt that you've had time to really go through it. And so I recommend that you do. She is a business owner in, here in Placerville, and she, in general, she appreciates and thinks that we, appreciates us working on this, and she says she's supportive of shoring up and strengthening the procedures and guidelines that we use. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. We really, as Mr. Smith said, you know, we are looking for input from others in our community, so that we go in the, you know, the proper direction on this. So anyway, I thank her very much for that. And as usual, I have buried my agenda. Okay. I like to have my agenda in front of me. Any other comments? All right. Thank you all for your hard work this evening, especially on this last item during the, for the special committee report. And it is, according, 7:32. We stand adjourned.